I didn't take it.
We're live?
We are live.
Okay.
All right, perfect. Good evening, everyone. This is the, oh dear. This is the March 11th Bennington Select Board Meeting. I'm calling it to order, and I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you in 15 minutes. Thank you. (audio cuts out) Good evening, everyone. This is the, oh dear. This is the March 11th Bennington Select Board Meeting. I'm calling it to order, and I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you in 15 minutes. Thank you. (audio cuts out) Good evening, everyone. And thank you for coming to tonight's meeting.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
I thought silence would work. Okay. All right. Thanks for being here. We had a short executive session. We're back. My name is Jeanne Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Sarah.
Hi, good evening. It's nice to see so many people here today. Sarah Perrin.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Hi, I'm Tom Haley.
Hi, I'm Jean Connor.
I'm Ed Woods.
Great. And also with us tonight, we have Assistant Town Manager Dan Monks. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes each meeting. And we have Josh Boucher, who faithfully takes care of filming us for Cat TV, so that we are both live and you can watch it recorded. As we always do, let's begin the night with the Pledge of Allegiance. Gary, would you lead us?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in his love, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Welcome.
And now, Tom, would you read the vision statement that guides our work?
I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, for the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? So move? Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda? I think I do. Line, line 82, let me see what that was. Oh, on the comment on line 82, can we note that that, that number one was ruled out of order? And also, on line 222, the statement that begins with "we no longer say," really should say "it's no longer acceptable to call Jews and people of color many slang terms. Telling Polish jokes is seriously frowned upon." I can give you, I can give you the written piece if you want. Okay. Any other, any other notes? We did, we did find the location of Hazara. It's the golf station at 501 South Street. Anything else? Hearing nothing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstentions? All right, perfect. All right, next up is public comment. And we have a couple people. Representative Morrissey is up first with an announcement of the meeting.
Mary Morrissey, Bennington. I'm just here to announce, if you didn't read it in the Bennington banner on Saturday, there is going to be a public hearing of the, with I Care, who is looking to purchase the Bennington Health and Rehab. It will be on Monday, April 1st, here at this firehouse facility, from 5:30, and we have the room till 7:30. The Commissioner of Dale, which is Disabilities, Aging, and Independent Living, will be here as well. Hopefully, we can have some questions, answers to some of the questions folks have in the community. That is my announcement. But I have a question of the board, and maybe you can answer it. But I wondered, with your executive session, we hadn't gone into the meeting yet. How do you have an executive session before a meeting's called to order? And are you going to tell us what the executive session was about?
So, we don't usually answer right after, but in this case, I will. We did call the meeting to order at 5:45, and then immediately went into executive session, and then came back.
Even though the meeting was set for six, so you didn't have...
It's on the agenda.
For executive session.
My apologies.
Yes. Thank you for asking.
Mary, that was also on...
Oh, and, and the...
The meeting was on camera. The beginning of the meeting is filmed.
It is on camera, and, and an action related to that executive session will come up later in the, on the agenda. Okay. Let's see. Next up, new policies. Marie, is it Corrales? I'm sorry, how do you pronounce it?
Corrales.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you can use either mic, whichever you prefer.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to ask questions or just make a statement, so I'm just going to make a statement, if that's okay?
Sure.
Could you do yourself first, please? It's Maria Corrales. I'm a resident of Bennington, Vermont. I believe that some efforts have been made to create transparency in Bennington, Vermont, allowing residents to make good decisions. But we need public trust, especially when you consider that conflict of interest is complicated. Therefore, creating a new broad policy mandating disclosure, an actual list of nonprofits, foundations, charities, organizations, where select board members, our town manager, and their family and friends have any interest, allows residents to make good voting decisions tied to our tax revenue dollars, because our local economy is hurting, and we leave existing debts to our children and grandchildren. We have something in place already regarding conflict of interest, but it only dictates a behavior that shouldn't occur. It's not necessarily, it doesn't mitigate anything. And that's why I looked at your policies, and I said, "That's not enough." I mean, the Clintons were supposed to not behave a certain way, and they did. But if maybe if they were told they couldn't do certain things, and they were mandated to do things, it would prevent it. So, that's my belief, that there should be a policy, an actual list created of conflicts of interest that might impede on decision-making. And then we know that that's the reason that person stepped aside, and we know that that person is going to be held accountable for if he doesn't.
Thank you. So, again, I'm going to break the rule again, just because there aren't that many people on, speaking tonight. The conflict of interest policy does require a person to say why they're, why they're stepping aside. In terms of your broader issue, that's a very good question for a new board to take up. As you know, we're right on the cusp of, of a new board. So, it's better for, I think, it's better to wait a month to, to address that. Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
All right, next up.
Chairman, I'd like to try and add something.
Yes, I'll, I'll add you to it. Let's see, next is Deb, talk about a policy for Ben High.
Deb Matt, Bennington. At the last meeting on the agenda, we were to discuss the name change at Two Roads in Town. But the board had two sign-up sheets here, one for public comments and one for people to talk about the name change. I thought we weren't supposed to sign up for public comments, and I was confused as to why it was allowed. And I asked at the last meeting about someone coming to talk about the hotel motel program that could answer questions, and if you gave an answer, I must have missed that, so if you could please tell me again. And for the Ben High, I understand there's another $11 million being attached to the price tag, and I'm curious as to how that's going to affect the project.
I've gone down this road, haven't I? Um, let's, yes, so let's, let's hear other people's comments, and then we will come back to you to answer your questions.
(audio cuts out)
It's a lovely ringtone. Okay. Next up is Nancy White, Bennington Cost.
Nancy White, Bennington. I've spent a lot of time on the town website, looking at the Ben High information. Several days, I was on that section. It still said $29 million, but I saw a line that said $45 to $46 million in tax credits and grants, so I thought it was a typo. As I started digging around, I went to the section where it shows what you're going to be paying for the different things. It said, "As of January 1st, the price tag was over $41 million." Now, I don't recall the public being told that in January, February, or March, they certainly should have been. Now, somebody had said something about asbestos. In early '22, I raised concerns about asbestos in the addition. I think the "why" was already up there. You were talking about putting the seniors. And I repeatedly asked town officials, "Where were the reports that would state that that section was free of mold, asbestos, and air quality? Your studies have shown no problems with air quality and mold. I believe there's still asbestos in there, and I don't understand why the "why" in if it was free of asbestos." So my question, the big one, is why didn't the town officials announce in January, February, March, this price tag had jumped from $29 million to over $41 million? And I want to remind the public, 18 months ago, town officials in Hail Resources said $20 million was a solid number for the project, and I think John said it might have been a little under $20 million. I can't find anywhere that gives me a breakdown of what each section costs to renovate, the gym, the basement, the parking lot. That's something common sense that everybody should be able to see, so I think there needs to be a lot of discussions about where this over $41 million is actually going.
Thank you, Nancy. Sam, come on up. What's your topic?
Solar area.
Okay. You had to hold, hold your comments, then.
The fire that we had.
Oh, okay.
The network.
Okay.
Sam, Michigan, Bennington, Vermont. Last month, on the 27th, as you know, some of you do know, some of you don't, at 6:00 PM on the West End, there was a brush fire that was threatening a solar array. Obviously, our, I want to thank our first responders for acting so quickly and diligently and accurately, but I can imagine there were some voids of who was to contact. There was no contact information, and that brings up my information of, a lot of residents were aware of this fire, of how to evacuate, where to evacuate. There were a lot of unknown answers, and I hope we learn from this to have this in place. Also, for contact, I know the town can't monitor it, but on certain arrays, there should be contact information. In the event of an emergency, officials can contact that. We had two state champions that came in, that won, or shall they acknowledge? One is Grace Christian, that should have been acknowledged a few weeks ago, and also our wrestling team, won again. There was a subject brought up about crosswalks, and yes, I know, I've been through it. It takes time, and with cooperation from other...
First, with an announcement of a meeting.
Mary Morrissey Bennington, I'm just here to announce if you didn't read it in the Bennington banner on Saturday, there is going to be a public hearing of the, with I Care, who is looking to purchase the Bennington Health and Rehab. It will be on Monday, April 1st, here at this firehouse facility from 5:30, and we have the room till 7:30. The Commissioner of Dale, which is Disabilities, Aging and Independent Living, will be here as well. Hopefully, we can have some questions, answers to some of the questions folks have in the community. That is my announcement, but I have a question of the board, and maybe you can answer it, but I wondered, with your executive session, we hadn't gone into the meeting yet. How do you have an executive session before a meeting's called to order? And are you going to tell us what the executive session was about?
So, we don't usually answer right after, but in this case, I will. We did call the meeting to order at 5:45, and then immediately went into executive session, and then came back.
Even though the meeting was set for 6:00, so you didn't have...
It's on the agenda.
For executive session.
My apologies.
Yes. Thank you for asking.
Mary, that was also on...
Oh, and, and the...
The meeting was on camera. The beginning of the meeting is filmed.
It is on camera, and, and an action related to that executive session will come up later in the, on the agenda. Okay. Let's see. Next up, new policies. Marie, is it Corrales? I'm sorry, how do you pronounce it? Okay. And you can use either mic, whichever you prefer.
I'm not sure if I want to ask a question or just make a statement, so I'm just going to make a statement, if that's okay?
Sure.
It's Maria Corrales. I'm a resident of Bennington, Vermont. I believe that some efforts have been made to create transparency in Bennington, Vermont, allowing residents to make good decisions, but we need public trust, especially when you consider that conflict of interest is complicated. Therefore, creating a new broad policy mandating disclosure, an actual list of nonprofits, foundations, charities, organizations where select board members, our town manager, and their family and friends have any interest allows residents to make good voting decisions tied to our tax revenue dollars because our local economy is hurting and we leave existing debts to our children and grandchildren. We have something in place already regarding conflict of interest, but it only dictates a behavior that shouldn't occur. It's not necessarily, it doesn't mitigate anything. And that's why I looked at your policies, and I said, that's not enough. I mean, the Clintons were supposed to not behave a certain way, and they did. But if maybe if they were told they couldn't do certain things, and they were mandated to do things, it would prevent it. So, that's my belief, that there should be a policy, an actual list created of conflicts of interest that might impede on decision-making, and then we know that that's the reason that person stepped aside, and we know that that person is going to be held accountable for if he doesn't.
Thank you. So, again, I'm going to break the rule again, just because there aren't that many people on, speaking tonight. The conflict of interest policy does require a person to say why they're, why they're stepping aside. In terms of your broader issue, that's a very good question for a new board to take up. As you know, we're right on the cusp of, of a new board, so it's better for, I think, it's better to wait a month to, to address that. Thank you very much for your comment. All right. Next up.
Chairman, I'd like to add, sign in.
Yes, I'll, I'll add you to it. Let's see. Next is Deb, talk about a policy for Ben High.
At the last meeting on the agenda, we were to discuss the name change at Two Roads in Town, but the board had two sign-up sheets here, one for public comments and one for people to talk about the name change. I thought we weren't supposed to sign up for public comments, and I was confused as to why it was allowed. And I asked at the last meeting about someone coming to talk about the hotel motel program that could answer questions, and if you gave an answer, I must have missed that, so if you could please tell me again. And for the Ben High, I understand there's another $11 million being attached to the price tag, and I'm curious as to how that's going to affect the project.
I've gone down this road, haven't I? Let's, yes, so let's, let's hear other people's comments, and then we will come back to you to answer your questions. It's a lovely ringtone. Okay. Next up is Nancy White, Bennington Cost.
I've spent a lot of time on the town website looking at the Ben High information. Several days I was on that section. It still said $29 million, but I saw a line that said $45 to $46 million in tax credits and grants, so I thought it was a typo. As I started digging around, I went to the section where it shows what you're going to be paying for the different things. It said, as of January 1st, the price tag was over $41 million. Now, I don't recall the public being told that in January, February, or March, they certainly should have been. Now, somebody had said something about asbestos. In early '22, I raised concerns about asbestos in the addition. I think the "why" was already up there. You were talking about putting the seniors. And I repeatedly asked town officials, where were the reports that would state that that section was free of mold, asbestos, and air quality? Your studies have shown no problems with air quality and mold. I believe there's still asbestos in there, and I don't understand why the "why" in the town and the select board encouraged everybody to go in that building, not knowing if it was free of asbestos. So my question, the big one, is why didn't the town officials announce in January, February, or March, this price tag had jumped from 29 million to over 41 million? And I want to remind the public, 18 months ago, town officials in Hale Resources said $20 million was a solid number for the project, and I think John said it might have been a little under 20 million. I can't find anywhere that gives me a breakdown of what each section costs to renovate, the gym, the basement, the parking lot. That's something common sense that everybody should be able to see, so I think there needs to be a lot of discussions about where this over $41 million is actually going.
Thank you, Nancy. Sam, come on up. What's your topic?
Solar.
Okay. You had to hold, hold your comments, then.
The fire that we had.
Oh, okay.
In the neighborhood.
Okay.
Sam, Michigan, Bennington, Vermont. Last month, on the 27th, as you know, some of you do know, some of you don't, at 6:00 PM on the West End, there was a brush fire that was threatening a solar array. Obviously, our, I want to thank our first responders for acting so quickly and diligently and accurately, but I can imagine there were some voids of who was to contact, there was no contact information, and that brings up my information of, a lot of residents weren't aware of, of this fire, of how to evacuate, where to evacuate. There were a lot of unknown answers, and I hope we learn from this to have this in place. Also, for contact, I know the town can't monitor it, but on certain arrays, there should be contact information in the event of an emergency, officials can contact that. We had two state champions that came in, that won, or shall they acknowledge? One is Grace Christian, that should have been acknowledged a few weeks ago, and also our wrestling team won again. There was a subject brought up about crosswalks, and yes, I know, I've been through it. It takes time and with cooperation from Mother Nature. I can't understand why we can't wait past May, and systematically of, some crosswalks might be painted downtown, then one street, then another street. I think we should hit the more important crosswalks, like on, by schools, or where they're worn out, like on the West End or East End, instead of just erratically going through between May and August. And I was on the converse, on the phone conversation with Jonah, we've got new people coming into town, and instead of saying, it's on the website, it's on the website, why don't we put together a manual, a constructive manual? I'm still learning myself about the town. The ins and outs of what's to be expected about residents when they come into town, like the yearly flushing of our fire hydrants, or how to contact with our police department, or with our town government, or other happenings that happen, like taking care of our cemeteries or whatnot. I know it's all on the website, but people that are new to our town, that's not very welcoming, so hopefully I'll be working with Jonah of putting together some type of a manual that can be handed out to people that come to town as a welcoming situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Clark, come on up. What is your topic, please?
Top was our funding, Ben High funding. Good evening. Clark Adams, again, resident of Bennington. I understand, and correct me if I'm mistaken, that it's, there's been an established fixed amount of financial responsibility for the city for this project, and then the Hale Enterprise has their own fixed amount they're responsible for. I became aware that through our congressional representative's office, an additional $1 million in funding has been procured for this project. My question is, what direction is that money going? Is it going toward Hale Enterprises, or is it going toward the town of Bennington's financial obligation to address this project? And also, I guess, going in with that, if in fact it's going to Hale Enterprises, is that going to be another one of the grants or tax credits, or are we talking a infusion of cash? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so let's start from the top. So, Deb, the Hotel Motel voucher program, I did reach out to Adam Sanzik, who's the regional field coordinator for human services for this area, and what he said is, right now, everything is, is just status quo. They're waiting for the, the voucher program changes before they can give us any more information. But he was, he was reaching out to see if he could get more local numbers, and I did not hear back from him. So, so that's still in the works, and it's, it's a good question, and as soon as we have some information, we'll have somebody come and give a more comprehensive response. I think right now it's just a hard time to pin anything down, but I thank you for your question. We required sign-in because open meeting law requires us to print the, for Nancy Lively, our, our recorder, to record the names of every single person who is actively engaged in the, in, in the meeting. So it's select board, it's town officials that speak, and it's any community members that speak. And as you may have seen, sometimes the minutes are rhymes with instead of your real name, so, and, and we're also doing our best guess at, at how to pronounce it. So when we know we're going to have a lot of people speaking, it's nice if people write legibly so that, you know, so that Nancy is, is, has a leg up on, on getting your name right, because otherwise, we just have to fix it in the minutes, and that's annoying. So, so that's, that's why we ask it. We don't do it generally, we just do it if we, if we expect a lot of people speaking. Let's see. And then we had a couple of questions about Ben High.
Jeannie, I'm happy to, I'm happy to take the Ben High question.
Okay, which I'm, yeah, which I'm going to give to Dan.
Whenever you're ready for me.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So, I guess there are three things, and I may actually call on Shannon for the congressionally-directed spending, but the Ben High...
Speak.
Oh, you can't hear it? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. As far as Ben High is concerned, as you know, as you work through any project, there are price increases, and I think Clark was right on, he did mention there is a fixed amount of contribution from the town, so any price increase doesn't impact that particular amount. We have committed $2 million in ARPA funds for the construction of the project, and then there's some funding for the soft costs as well. But that has not changed and will not change unless the, the board decides to change that at a public meeting, so those cost increases are 100% the responsibility of Hale Resources, and they are, they are collecting and gathering and putting together the funding for, for the total cost, less our contribution from the town, which has been heavily documented in the past, and we will do another update, I'm sure, in the future, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. But the, it is correct that the price has gone up, but all of that is at the response, is the responsibility of Hale Resources, and they are, they are actually successfully gaining funding sources for that. As far as there was a question about asbestos, based on the information I have, there's no, there isn't any asbestos in the wing that we, that the "why" used before it was closed. There is some asbestos in the old section that Hale's going to use for residential, but it's not any danger unless it's disturbed. Obviously, they're going to be disturbing it to renovate it, so that's why the asbestos is important to be removed before the renovation, but the Hales are responsible for that, and will be removing asbestos in the older section to accommodate the new construction. Again, it's not unsafe as, in its current condition, but when it's disturbed for renovation, it has to be removed. As far as, I think the other question was regarding the congressionally-directed spending, so Shannon, I know you were deeply involved with that, and, and Clark kind of stole our thunder a little bit. We wanted to be able to announce the good news, but he did it, so thank you, Clark, for being on top of that. And so, that, that was actually congressionally-directed spending from Becca Ballant, Balance Office, and she get, get called with the good news last week. So, Shannon, can you maybe talk about that funding?
Sure. So, for those who aren't familiar, congressionally-directed spending are requests that we can make to our congressional delegation. In this case, it was Representative Becca Ballant to her office. So I think it was over a year ago, I put in an application for the Ben High project. Now, what happens next is, thankfully, that budget has passed, that funding will be awarded. My understanding is that the funding is coming through Housing and Urban Development. You know, it comes from DC, and I believe it's going to be in a HUD program called the Economic Development Initiative. So, most likely, that those funds will go towards the childcare center, given that that is all about, it will be creating jobs, it will be helping people to get to work by having childcare, so that will be the intended focus of that million dollars. So it's good news.
Super. And just to be clear to Clark's explicit question, that is a responsibility of Hale Resources, it's not town space. That's the, the childcare space will be leased by the Hales and not to the town.
So the funding is going into Mr. Taylor, primary volunteer?
It's going into that whole funding.
It's going into the redevelopment of the project.
So, just to explain that a little bit more, a lot of my role is helping to, to find federal and state funding for community and economic development. So, in many cases, the town is a pass-through for funds, like these funds in this case, that are, you know, enacting some of our goals. So, even though it is going to be a Hale, piece of the Hales development, that million dollars is going to be flowing through the town, just like we have funds that come through the Community Development Block grant that fund housing, for example. And we aren't housing developers, but those funds go towards housing development. So in this case, those funds will be flowing to the childcare center.
Great. Dan, do you want to speak to air quality? That was the other question.
Yeah, so we did air quality tests when we first investigated the building, and there were, there were no issues discovered. I do know that the Hales have done additional environmental testing within the older portion of the building, and there are some minor contamination issues that they will be taking care of with the asbestos, but we did do air testing before we agreed to lease the building.
And then I think the only other thing is, I know the chamber was working on a welcome packet that was for, to be distributed, and I don't know if that project went forward, but that's another place where we might look. Do you have some, Jonah, it looks like you have some info.
Can I also make your comment?
Yeah.
Jonah Spivak, Communications Coordinator.
Thank you.
There's actually been a couple of different requests on that same different theme, and I did have a good conversation with, with Sam, as well as others, so it's on my schedule to start work on that this week, to sort of have like a little cheat sheet for people coming to Bennington. When does the parking ban start? When, where, what do you do about trash and composting, and all sorts of things? So I thought that was a really terrific suggestion, and that's something we're moving ahead with. I did also want to note that on the Ben High page, which is really, I'm so glad people are using that for information, I do note that on the January 22nd meeting is when we introduced the revised budget that talked about the increase to the Ben High project to the tune of almost $42 million at this point. And I did double-check the website, and that is correctly noted at the front of the page, as Nancy mentioned. There is one spot down near the bottom where it talked about the earlier project summary that, when I first put up the page, that still had that $29 million number in there. I think it's in the, it's sort of, you could sort of figure out it's in the context of the conversation we're having back in 2021, but that's a really good point, and I'll make sure to update that, because that, I don't want to have there be any confusion about that. And I also just wanted to note that in that same, by the way, that slide deck with all those budget details are on that website under January 22nd, and it does talk about the cost for the town's portion being well over $8 million. So even though our contribution, which is 2.9 total, 2 million construction of ARPA funds, 500,000 pre-development costs of ARPA funds, 400,000 value of the senior center, the rest of those millions of dollars is on the Hales, and we do have a commitment right from the very beginning that the town would be partnering with the Hales to try to find every grant and resource available to help make the project work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah.
Thanks, Josh.
All right, let's move on. Chelsea Solar pre-filed testimony. Dan?
Okay.
You are up.
I think this one should be pretty straightforward, because we've been through this, I don't know how many times before. At least four. So just a little bit of background, you folks will recall that the latest, well, the previous iteration of solar, of the Chelsea Solar Project, the board had voted unanimously to support the Planning Commission's recommendation that it, that that project did not comply with the town plan. That was back in June of 2023. Recently, the Chelsea Solar LLC filed what they called a substantial, substantial change to that, to that project. The only change, I don't know if it's substantial, but it is a change, is they have removed the measure of lowering the solar array on the site. It was a mitigation measure that they proposed would mitigate the scenic impact of the project, and they have, and their substantial change filing indicated that they were not going to implement that mitigation measure, for whatever reason, it's not clear. So in January of 2024, the, the Planning Commission reiterated their recommendation that the plan, even as modified, did not comply with the town plan, including the town's energy section, and we are simply, they're simply forwarding on that recommendation, and the request to the select board this evening is to accept that recommendation, that the revised Chelsea Solar Project still, and continues not, to comply with the town plan, including the energy section of the town plan.
For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and find that the revised Chelsea Solar Plan does not comply with the town plan, including the energy section of the town plan?
Yes, I think, for the second time within this calendar year, I'll second, I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and deny Alcoa Renewables Energy Limited's request to deem Chelsea Solar Project as within a preferred area under the town plan energy amendment. I'm just reading what I said last time.
I'm going to second Sarah's motion.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public? Please. Introduce yourself, your town.
Laura Block, I'm a resident of Apple Hill. I'm here just to thank the select board for voting the way they did, because we've, living in Apple Hill, we've been living with these developers for about 13 years, and everything they do has been denied by the PUC and the Supreme Court. I'd just like to add, Dan, that there is a reason why they've modified the plan not to dig down 18 feet to pretend to hide the solar array. That's because they were going to dump all that soil, and this is, this is what they said in a scorn deposition, they were going to dump all that soil on part of our development that only allows residential use on that lot. And they knew that before they even asked you to allow them to dig down and dump all that soil there. And they knew that because they had already, years before, tried to build a road through that, on that lot, which wasn't allowed, and they sued us in Apple Hill to allow that road, and they lost that suit in the district court. So they knew that years ago, that they couldn't use that lot for commercial use, but they thought they could hide that soil somewhere, and nobody would notice. So that's the reason why this new plan is now before the Planning Commission and before you. So I just wanted to, in case anybody thought these guys did anything legal, they don't. So, so thank you, thank the town, I would just like to thank the town for having such a good town, or solar, energy amendment to our town plan. That has protected this site that would be visible from the gateway to Bennington. So thank you, and thank you for your vote tonight.
Anyone else would like to speak? Nope. All right, we ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the ayes have it. All right, next up, Ben High contract extension.
Nope.
No, I skipped one. Planning Commission pathway name recommendations.
You all going to stay around and applaud again? That'd be cool. Hi, everybody. I'm Michael McDonough, I'm Chair of the Bennington Planning Commission, and I'm joined this evening by Bridget Elder, also a commission member, and a commission member who served with me on a subcommittee that made recommendations to the Planning Commission regarding this evening's topic. That subcommittee consisted, as I said, of me and Bridget, and also Shannon Barsati and Jonah Spivak. Dan had a play in that, as did Mark Andrews from the Bennington County Regional Commission. I'm going to start by saying, a great many years ago, Bennington did something through the efforts of then-town Community Development Director, Tom Bluto, to bring the concept of a River Walk to our downtown. And Tom, with the help of the federal government, was successful in making that happen, and for years since, that River Walk has essentially remained, with the exception of a couple of extensions to the east and to the west, but people would say, well, it didn't really go anywhere. Well, our efforts and... But people would say, well, it didn't really go anywhere. Well, our efforts, and Dan can attest that these efforts have been going on for 25 years, was to make the River Walk more than just a place, but a way of getting to other places. And I'm very proud to say, on behalf of the town, and because it's my town, that there has been a great deal of work through not only the town and the Planning Commission, but other groups and organizations to bring a system of trails and paths to Bennington. And a number of, I'm sure, are familiar with those, Trails to the White Rocks, the Bat's Trails on Mount Anthony, even the Hospitals Trail up at S V M C. These have all been pieces that you will hear more about tonight, that are beginning to create a thing, as far as our town is concerned. Now, there's another aspect of this, obviously it serves the community in a great many ways, but another aspect of this is that towns and regions that have these kind of assets are able to market them, they attack people from beyond. And so, in that sense, they are an element of economic development and vitality. And I mentioned Chittenden County has done a great deal in this regard, and the Lemoyle Rail Trail in north, excuse me, Northern Vermont is also a significant attraction. And so, the Planning Commission, as we are beginning to see this critical mass, felt it would be appropriate, particularly from that economic development standpoint, to establish an identity for this grand system of trails and paths that are growing and will continue to grow around our community. And so, that was the reason we went into the, the subcommittee portion, to address the possibilities of finding identifiable and marketable names for this resource, which broadly covers a great deal of what we can see from the windows here. And so, we did work on that process, and I'm going to turn it over to Jonah and Shannon to take you through that process, and then we'll come back and identify our conclusions for the Board of Selectmen. Our purpose here tonight, I'm sorry, that was an old term and an old slip, the Select Board, it's funny how lights and bells and whistles go off when you do something stupid like that. But they will, we're asking them tonight to approve the proposal that the Planning Commission will be making this evening. So I'll turn it to Shannon and Jonah.
Thank you, Michael. So this is, what we're looking at here is a map of our pathway network, which the town developed in partnership with the Bennington County Regional Commission Transportation Planner, Mark Anders. And the Planning Commission and town staff realized that as our trails and paths are growing, and there are more, you know, extensions planned and connections made, that we would benefit from a thoughtful approach to pathway naming. If you want to go to the next one. So some of the criteria around naming the pathways were to reflect cohesive themes centered around local places, local geography and historical sites, et cetera, also to consider and target the users of the paths, including residents, visitors, cyclists, runners, walkers, commuters, et cetera. And I'll pass it to Jonah.
My primary role in this effort was for public outreach, and to that end, we had a number of articles in the Bennington Banner. We had a, a number of outreaches on our social media platforms, and we did a whole page sort of talking about the process that Mike described, as well as the criteria that we had in mind, and most importantly, an opportunity for the public to comment. And we were fortunate to have about 25 people provide comments to this process.
Do you want to talk about the recommendations?
Well, we did sort of change around, and I'm happy to do this. We concluded that we had a broad system that we wanted to identify. We had very specific elements within that system that we wanted to, to identify and settle upon names that would be recognizable to the community. So the system that we were talking about, it doesn't include certain mountain bike and hiking trails that are included in the area, but for this overall system, which does include trails and pathways going to the north and through downtown Bennington, and we, after much deliberation, we thought about the name Bennington Community Pathways, to identify that system of, one, that's in Bennington, and, two, it's a community asset, and, three, they are passed through the community. And so, we settled on that as our recommendation tonight regarding the entire system. We also have a north-south, north-south shared use path to Bennington College and possibly North Bennington, sort of within progress. And we know that the initial component of that is the rail trail that extends from the river, the Willumsack River, north, and arrives at, down on North Side Drive, and then the named section that continues on from that, that a lot of people are familiar with, would be the Ninja Trail, which extends in a much more crude fashion, thanks to the hard work of a great many volunteers, down past Hanaford, and then is paved again to the site of where the new roundabout is going to be, which will certainly incorporate our need to get across 67 at that point, and, and eventually bring you to the north, to the college pathway system, and that brings you directly in touch with North Bennington. And so, we've called that, for geographical reasons, obvious identifiable reasons, the Willumsack Valley Path, because that valley is our home, and it has a river running through it. Not to, not to get too mushy with titles from rivers, from movies and such, but, but that's what it is. And, and we, we have a sense of place with that Willumsack Valley Path name. The third, are functional connections within this broad system. One is, one connects Kosher Drive and East Road, and we named that the Willow Park Path, because it's, it's in the vicinity of Willow Park, and it, and there is a great deal of pedestrian traffic there along Kosher Drive, that we've been for years trying to figure out how to solve. We now have a pedestrian pathway that takes you along that route and connects the schools and eventually up to Willow Park. And then, the next piece, Orchard Village and Willowbrook and Molly Stark Trails, and because of the Molly Stark presence and the history of that name, we've applied that to that section, which connects those schools and eventually connects you with the possibility of, of going north towards Willow Park, towards Willow Park and beyond. So those four pieces, we think establish identity for what is in place. But the really exciting part about this is that we are, we have the momentum to move further. And part of that momentum, I've already mentioned, is that the Ninja Trail is in the town sites to bring that up to the level of the paved trails that were built around Walmart, and that take you to that Ninja Trail element. And, secondly, and this is really exciting, and it's, it's not news, but studies were done in regards to, through the Benning County Regional Commission, with regards to the Old Trolley Line that connected Bennington with Massachusetts. And Massachusetts, particularly Williamstown, is beginning to build north, and we are beginning to have conversations about how we can take advantage of some of the improvements, improvements, that have been made in that area and along the Old Trolley Line. And particularly, I'm referencing the not-to-be-built right-of-way for the 279 section that, that would go north and south from Bennington. But that gives us a sighting for a very good start on at least a functional pathway, utilizing the Trolley Line and the old, the 279 right-of-way, to begin to make that connection to Massachusetts. And there have been meetings going on with the Regional Commission and with representatives from Powell and Massachusetts to, to start to bring that to fruition. So we're, we're really excited about this, and, and we hope that this idea of establishing identity, which will be followed by signs and wayfinding signs, to make them available and useful to people, we hope that this will just be the start of continuation of something really big for Bennington. And who am I turning back to?
Before you, I want to add one thing before.
Please.
I'm just going to add one thing before Shannon gets back in, which is that while the Willumsack, the Willumsack Valley Path really incorporates the names of a lot of other sections, there's one section that we are going to preserve, which is the Downtown River Walk or the River Walk portion. Because of it being the first and its unique relationship with downtown, we felt that it was important that that River Walk retain its identity as part of what is now the Willumsack, potentially, the Willumsack Valley Path. And I would note that in terms of public comment, the Willumsack Valley Path, the Willow Park Path, and the Molly Stark Path, were all by and far the favorites among, from the public input. It was much more challenging with the overall name for the system. There was no consensus on any of the name suggestions around that, and that was more of an example of the Pathway Committee taking all that input from public comment and brainstorming and coming up with that Bennington Community Pathways. And you can see that reflected, so again, when you think about the whole pathway network, that's that Bennington Community Pathways. And again, that was the hardest nut to crack, in a way, whereas the, the Willow Park Pathway, or I'm sorry, the Molly Stark Pathway, that was very obvious. Likewise, whoops. Likewise, the Willow Park Path was, was not really much argument. But again, the idea is that now this big, long section, which has many names, all becomes the Willumsack Valley Path. So.
Well, and I think, I think Michael already covered this well, to talk about just that this is, these pathways are both, you know, community development, but also have an economic impact, because as we know, trail systems are a great attraction, and the more that we can come up with a name and really brand that and get it out, both on our town website, but also our town marketing site, Vermont Begins Here, that's part of our plan, and to connect this pathway system to other attractions, such as the Henry Bridge and other covered bridges, having that connection between Bennington College students to get downtown easily is also a goal that's been, you know, in the making for a long time. And then I'm also on that committee that Michael mentioned for the Trolley Line Path, and that will also, you know, that's going to be a process, but we're starting it now. We have an enthusiastic committee of people from across the state lines, so that's an exciting project. And then I think we can just move on to the, to our. Sure, no, you go ahead.
The Better Bennington Corporation would run me out of town if Shannon hadn't bailed me out and got more specific about the River Walk. And, and we all know that the town threw a grant from the state of Vermont, it's a downtown transportation grant, which the town applied for and was successful, that has funded that first phase of the Willumsack redevelopment with new lighting, new paving, and solving some drainage problems. And of course, the other thing that fits into this whole puzzle is the Skateboard Park. And that is going to be in direct connection to the, the River Walk and to points north and points south along the new rail trail. So I maya Koopa to the Benning, Better Bennington Corporation. Go ahead.
So now we're just bringing it back to you, the Select Board, with the next steps, asking for a motion to adopt the recommendations of the, the naming committee and to request staff and Planning Commission to develop a wayfinding sign plan for the new pathway system.
Great. For the purposes of discussion, do we want to make that motion? Okay, I'll make the motion, sorry. I don't have my mic on.
I'd be glad to second the motion.
All right. Any thoughts about the names? I personally like them.
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make.
Yeah, I do, too. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So let me just start by saying congratulations to you guys. I, I heard Mike say that this was 25 years in the making, and there have been a number of projects of late that have taken that long. Thanks for the shout out to Tom Bluto, he was my father-in-law, for those of you who knew that. He's been gone for about 14 years, and it is extremely exciting for his family, I'm sure, to see this happening. I raised my kids on these pathways throughout town. These things have meant so much to so many people for so long, and for them to be actually coming together under their own identity is, is pretty huge for all of us. So thank you for that. I'm in, very much in favor and support of the work that you've done.
I was wondering, well, first of all, Jonah, I'm hoping you're going to include the map on your list of cheat sheets that you're creating for people that move to Bennington.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I'm wondering if, when the weather breaks, as part of the public rollout and education of all this, we could have some town walks, maybe take a section at a time and have people gather, and there's, I've walked most of these, but there are portions of these paths that I've never walked. So I was just going to throw that out there. I'd be happy to help organize it. Like I said, when the weather breaks, it'd be nice to get outside and do that.
I do, just to give you that, Ed, I do want to say that Barbara Louco is a member of the Willumsack River Walk group that organizes walks there and everyone. It was a nice trip.
Just thanks for your hard work.
Any thoughts? Sure.
I never get lost, because everybody tells me where to go. Ha ha. No, it's, I echo the statement of Mr. Woods, what he said about Tom Bluto. As you know, I grew up on the flats, and seeing this many, many years of what it was, and now what it has turned into, and the names, and it takes a lot of work to do this. So it ties the knot of, of our historical nature. And, you know, this is what brings new people into town to embrace this. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Jeannie, I do have one announcement that I like to make. So the path soon to be formally known as the Ninja Path, has, we have two bridges, part of that pathway. One, both of them were damaged recently, one of them has been replaced. The second one will be replaced within the next three weeks. So that entire Willumsack Valley Pathway, or Path, will be accessible again, probably starting within a month. So we hope that people will take advantage of that and start using it again heavily. We know when those bridges went out, we heard from a lot of people that were sad to see them go, but they'll be back. Both, one of them is already back, and the other one will be back in about a month.
All right, ready to vote? All those in the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please, close. Please, have stitches.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You all have seen the amendment in the packet, but I will summarize it.
This amendment is virtually identical to the last amendment. It simply extends the date on which the town can terminate its lease agreement without penalty from June 30th of 2024 to September 30th of 2024, and this is simply to accommodate obtaining all the funding necessary to move the project forward. As you've heard, we did obtain another $1 million from Becca Ballant, which is greatly appreciated, and I understand that we're getting close to the next New Market Tax Credits funding, so closer and closer to funding, but Hail Resources has negotiated an agreement with Chris Gilbert that the town endorses to extend that date for termination without penalty from June 30th, 2024 to September 30, 2024.
Great. Do we have a motion to this effect?
I have a question.
It's not yet. Hang on one second.
A motion made for discussion purposes, please.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second to amend to, sorry, the lease agreement to September 30th, 2024, for discussion.
Okay. Discussion from the Select Board. Nope. Questions from, or comments from the audience? Yes, Nancy?
This is the entire contract-
Nancy, please, please introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Nancy White-Bennington. I can't find anywhere in this entire contract and agreement where it says Chris Gilbert will be sending $400,000 to the Ben High. It should be. In September and October, the public was told, give him the senior building. Now, Stu said the money would go to the gym, the town website said it would go to the senior center section. Regardless, if it doesn't say in here that he's sent, if he's going to pay the $400,000, I don't think it's going to happen. So I would urge you not to approve this. Have the lawyer put an amendment saying that he will pay the $400,000, and it will go to the town office, so the public can be assured that, for once, he will meet his responsibilities. And second, Dan, can you clarify for the public? What is the total cost of the project? How much do you have in hand right now?
So, the total cost of the project, including the Hail Resources portion?
The total project of the Ben High.
Okay. It's roughly, and Shannon, correct me, Jonah, correct me if I'm wrong, it's between 40 and 42 million at this time. The town's, as Jonah specifically stated earlier, the town's contribution is about, if you add in all of the components, about 2.9, so we're leveraging $42 million of investment in this community with 2.9 million dollars.
And how much do you have right now?
The town has all of the 2.9 million.
No, altogether, for the project, if it's 42 million, how much do you have towards the 42?
So, as we've mentioned many, many times, Hail Resources is responsible for the additional funding, so I can't give you an exact answer. I do know that last time we met, which was in January, Zach had mentioned he thought he was at 60%, and we're obviously much higher now, but I don't know where the total, what the percentage is.
Okay. And as far as the contract and Mr. Gilbert and the $400,000?
What is, what is your question?
If it doesn't say it in the contract, I don't think he's going to pay it.
This is not, this is not a question of him paying, this is part of the acquisition price.
He, the public was told, give him the building, he will then send $400,000-
That has never been stated, Nancy, and that is inaccurate information.
Dan, it was on the town website in September and October, and Stu brought it up, and I don't think he told me in the office. I don't know if it was in his Bennington Banner column, or he said it here.
Nancy, it's inaccurate.
That's inaccurate information.
And what I would suggest you do is to sit down with Dan or Stu, and they can bring up the website, and they can go through, they can go through the information, then go through the funding stack again.
I brought it from the past, that information, it was gone from the website.
Nancy, that is inaccurate information, it's never been true.
It's 100% accurate.
Thank you very much. Are we ready to vote?
So, I would just ask that the motion include authorization for the manager or assistant manager to sign the amendment?
Yes, yes, yes. Can we amend it to say that?
Amending the motion that I made, as Dan just suggested, like he said.
Second.
All right, good.
As they said.
All right, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Street Naming Committee. This was the purpose of our executive session prior to the meeting, and what we did was both affirm the charge for the committee and also determine the slate. So what I'm going to do first is read the charge to the Street Naming Committee. It has two charges. The committee shall research the history of Squaw Hill Road and Gypsy Lane areas for the purpose of placing historical, rather than commemorative signage, in both areas, and for the purpose of presenting at least two possible names for Squaw Hill Road. The names shall be submitted to the town manager by April 2nd and presented to the Select Board for consideration at a public meeting on April 8th, 2024. Names chosen, street names chosen, shall recognize any known history of the street or the area, shall not duplicate or nearly duplicate any other street or road names already in existence in Bennington to avoid 911 confusion, shall be of a reasonable length, and shall not be considered derogatory or humorous. All right, so that is the charge. And so, in support of the charge, we offer the following slate for consideration. Bruce Lee Clark, Martha Mackey, and Scott Frost. Could I have a motion to accept this slate and charge? Nope, nope. Oh, are you withdrawn?
No, no, there's just one person. They want to be answered.
No, at this point, it's, we are in an executive session.
It's past the deadline.
Sorry. But it doesn't mean that you can't talk with that person, but let us continue, okay? Hang on, Scott, hang on. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Now, discussion. Scott, please come up. State your name, and, yeah, go forward.
I'd just like to mention that Christine Lewis would like to be on the committee, and I don't think she realized she had to submit or tell you ahead of time, although I think she did discuss it with you at the last meeting.
No, she did not, and she did discuss having, that she was interested in having historical information done. So what I would suggest is the, anyone that is on the committee, we're actually going to send you some, forward you some information from interested individuals who did not want to be on the committee but wanted, but offered to help, and Christine could certainly do that as well. Okay.
Yeah. Just to be clear, these meetings will be open to the public, and anybody who wants to attend can, so if you want to make sure that she's aware of the meetings and attends, that's perfectly appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they, and as always, individuals will get information about open meeting law and how it works being on a, on a public, on a public board, even if it's only three weeks. Yes, Nancy, please come up.
Nancy White, are the people who live on the street being impacted? Are they going to have a big say in the road? Because I think there's only a couple of houses.
So Nancy, they have already provided input, and we will forward that to the committee. Anyone else? All right. Are we ready to vote?
Just quickly, I think we should thank that everyone that did apply to be, or expressed interest in being on this board. We do appreciate everyone for wanting to participate in government, and if you weren't chosen for this one, we're constantly, we're frequently looking for help on matters, so please do apply again.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, it's very important. Thank you. All right. So with that, all those in favor of the slate and charge, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say no. Those abstaining, please indicate.
Abstaining.
Okay. Thank you. Can you state the reason for your abstention?
I'm abstaining because I was not at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And I have some conflicts of interest, and I don't want to vote opposed.
Okay. Thank you. All right, all right, great. So now, moving, we're to the manager's report.
All righty.
This is a record.
So, although I'm reading this report, it's actually from Stuart, who is in an undisclosed location at this time, but he had put together, Stuart had put together some responses to some comments and questions that came up at the last meeting, just to make sure that we responded to folks, and I'm just going to, going to read his responses. Scott David had-
Dan?
Excuse me? Oh, geez, I'm sorry about that. Again, Stuart had prepared some responses to some folks who had asked some questions at the last meeting, and I'm reading those responses. Scott Davis asked about the green space associated with a skate park and its relationship to the adjacent parking lot. Stuart noticed, noticed that the designers are working to expand the green belt associated with the skate park to ensure preservation of trees there and increase the amount of green space that will be available, so thank you, Scott, for that comment, and we are working on making sure that that's addressed. Mr. Adams had asked about placing Purple Heart Community Signs in locations similar to the Appalachian Trail Community Signs, and Stuart said he had approached Mr. Adams after the meeting to let him know that we would be looking at ways to place those signs in the community. I also know, is Jonah still here? Jonah, I think you met with Mr. Adams as well about the signs, is that correct? Okay. So we are working on that, and appreciate Mr. Adams' perseverance on that matter. Martha Mackey asked about the crosswalks, and it is, actually came up again tonight, I think Mr. Restino mentioned it, and we do paint those crosswalks as quickly as we can in the spring. Unfortunately, weather often impedes our progress, but we do try to make sure that those get done as soon as possible in the springtime. There was also discussion about the winter parking ban notice and signage. Just as a reminder to everyone, the winter parking ban is between November 15 and now April 15 of each season. It is posted at the interest of the community, highlighted every November before it takes effect in the newspaper, as well as social media. Usually warnings are placed on vehicles when it first takes effect in November, and so the residents can find off-street parking for the winter months. So that's his response on the winter parking ban. Other than that, I don't have any additional information to report on the manager's report.
Thank you very much. Outcoming agendas, the only thing I know about are the Bennington Career Month proclamation. Will, I think Morse is coming to, to talk about that and accept it, and then we are very much hoping that the whole town here will ban the program.
That, we hope to, and I think, I think there's already been a meeting and general agreement on that, so I'm hoping that that comes forward.
Yeah, I think we just need the-
The formal, yeah, the formal proposal, yeah.
Okay. Anybody aware of anything on the town's agenda today? Okay. All right. Other business?
No, it's not related to other business, but I'm sure my parents are probably watching me right now, and I visited them this weekend, it was my father's birthday, so if they are, happy birthday, Dad.
Gary?
I'd like to thank Gary for his service on this board for the past number of years.
He's still got one more.
Hold on to that one, hold on.
We're starting the celebration now.
As long as you brought us chocolate, you're off the hook. For those of you that pay very close attention, I just, we received a thank you card from the Vermont Old Cemetery Association. The board authorized a $500 donation to thank them for helping repair the cemetery that had been vandalized, so I'm just going to read it really briefly. This is the picture, it's on the front, it's really lovely. He said, "I wish to take this opportunity, opportunity to express my thanks to the Select Board for the generous donation to the Vermont Old Cemetery Association. As a nonprofit, we depend on donations to fund our grants to town program. Your $500 will be helpful in this endeavor. If Bennington needs assistance in its, in its historical burial grounds in the future, please do not hesitate to contact us. Thanks again, Tom Griffin." So, I just wanted to share that, it was very lovely of him to take the time to do that.
Ed?
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is he opposed or abstained? Okay. Thank you all.